Why do you agents?
The United States of America. And to the recompensable for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is some special presentations. Madam Mayor, if you would. Curtis Cowgill, who is going to be receiving a service award as a Borough Councilperson, is not here tonight. He has COVID, so he was smart enough to stay away from us.
So we have one presentation this evening for Jill Swetzer, who is a fellow graduate of Central Bucks High School. And I'm not going to mention the year. Honey, I'm not going to mention the year.
Thank you, Jill.
And Jill is receiving an award, and I think my counting is right, for 24 years on Parks and Recreation Board.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, so it is 25.
Yes.
And before I give you the award, I believe our Councilwoman Dennis LeBrone would like to say something.
I would. I wanted to thank Jill for her dedication to the Park and Rec Board. She and I were on that together. I was on there 29, almost 30 years. And your contributions were very important, particularly since you worked every day with school-age individuals. So thanks for your service.
It's been my pleasure.
If I might, I was here for all 25. Jill was just one of my favorite, favorite people to work with. I just will miss you, and thanks so much. It was just absolutely a pleasure.
It has been an absolutely glorious 25 years. So I'm so thrilled.
Whenever it's in a mic.
If I do it.
I think, yeah.
I'm okay.
So with that, in appreciation for your dedicated service as a member of the Doylestown Borough Parks and Recreation Board from 1999 to 2024.
Thank you. Baby's here. Thanks.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jill.
Thank you, Jill.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes from our February 26, 2024 council meeting. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Brown, I believe.
Second.
And a second by Mr. Kinney. Any questions or comments from any members of the council? Any questions or comments from any members of the public? Hearing none, I'd like to call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Madam Mayor, you're up again.
I just have a couple things. Our first Easter egg hunt at Broad Commons on Saturday, March 30th, had 200 youth registrations within the first 24 hours. The Easter Bunny visits Doylestown on March 24th, and photo ops are available from noon to 3:00 at Doylestown, discovered Doylestown's office. And the stores are holding scavenger hunts. And last, the protest market opens on April 13th. And that's the end of my announcement.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Public Safety, Mr. Frederick, you have anything for us?
Yes, Mr. President. Consideration of Ordinance Number 2024-2 prohibiting the retail sale of dogs and cats. Attached, please find Ordinance Number 2024-2, which prohibits the retail sale of dogs and cats in Doylestown Borough. Council, at its February 26, 2024 meeting, authorized the advertisement of this ordinance, and it has since been properly advertised. Public Safety Committee is recommending adoption of Ordinance Number 2024-2. If council wishes to follow the recommendation, it can do so by motion, and I so move.
Second.
We had a motion by Mr. Frederick, and a second by Mr. Brown. Any questions or comments from any members of the council? Hearing none, any questions or comments from any members of the public? Mr. Feingold?
Yes. My name is Mark Feingold, and I propose this ordinance. I'm also a resident in the borough. I want to thank Joe Frederick and other members of the Public Safety Committee for their support of this ordinance and for moving this ordinance before you today. I also want to thank John Davis for helping me work through the process to get here. I have to admit, it may not have been terribly difficult, but it was something I simply didn't know. So thank you, John. And I want to thank you, the Borough Council members, for considering this ordinance today and hopefully for adopting it today. Puppy mills have been a scourge in Pennsylvania and in many other states for a very, very long time. These inhumane commercial breeding facilities often grossly mistreat their breeding animals. There's lack of adequate food and water. Dogs are left in squalid, small, unsanitary enclosures, and they lack adequate veterinary care. Breeding dogs are continuously bred until they can no longer breed, and then they're either put down or they're actually abandoned. And puppies are frequently taken way too early from their mothers and are transported long distance. Too many of those puppies have bacterial infections, some of which are antibiotic-resistant. They're traumatized, and they may have long-term behavioral and other issues. And where are these puppies sold? Well, typically, they're sold in pet stores. The puppy in that window, which we all saw when we were young, probably was very likely, indeed, bred under horrendous conditions. So innocent consumers, the people who want to get an adorable puppy, often get puppies from pet stores that are damaged, that are sick, that are expensive to care for. These concerns I outlined for puppy mills also, as you might be aware, apply to kitten mills. The ordinance before this borough will prevent puppies and kittens from being sold in pet stores in the borough. And this will cut off a key conduit for puppy mills and selling their puppies, and of course, kitten mills as well. By adopting this ordinance, Doylestown Borough will join Philadelphia, Allentown, and Pittsburgh, who have similar ordinances. Moreover, the borough, adopting this this evening, hopefully will lead to other municipalities within our Commonwealth in adopting similar ordinances. And I'm hopeful that someday Pennsylvania will join some other states, like New York, Illinois, and Maryland, in passing a statewide law that would prohibit the sale of dogs and cats within pet stores. There's a legislation, actually, before the Pennsylvania Legislature called Victoria's Law to do just that. It hasn't gone forward yet, but hopefully someday it will. So I thank you for considering this today, and I hope that this day you will also adopt the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Feingold. We have one other person that wanted to speak. Linda, I think it's Reader?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Good evening, council members. My name is Linda Reader. I'm the Executive Director of the Bucks County SPCA, and I'm going to take a slightly different tack from Mr. Feingold. The Bucks County SPCA supports this proposal to ban stores that sell puppies and kittens in Doylestown. Our organization and our two animal shelters have served the area for 112 years, finding homes for unwanted or lost pets. We are very glad now to have a very high save rate of over 90% or higher. We do not want to see a return to the days of high euthanasia. It is our experience now that cats and dogs adopted through pet stores add to the unwanted pet problem in two ways. Many of these pets are not neutered or spayed when they are sold, and stores do not accept returns. At the SPCA, our pets are 100% guaranteed, and we take returns at any time in the pet's life. Good breeders also accept returns and offer guarantees. Good breeders do not wholesale their puppies and kittens to pet stores. Please help keep Doylestown pet adopters safe, the euthanasia rate low, and vote yes to support this necessary ordinance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Reader. Any other questions from any members of the council? Hearing none, I'd like to call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Yes, to finish my report, Doylestown Fire Company report. Everyone has that in their packet. And that is the end of my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Frederick. Let me finish signing this. Go ahead. Public Works Administration, Mr. Brown, you have anything?
We did not meet. No, we did not meet this month, that's right. But the Public Works monthly report is attached, and I will hand it over to Mr. Ellinger.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. We've been working on plurality of projects. We've started cleaning up in the parks and getting ballfields ready for the sporting season. It is that time of year. Public Works has been constructing a Sallyport for the Police Department to improve their facility. It's been a goal of the Chiefs for a long time. Public Works has also started construction of the bathrooms next door for Broad Commons Park, and we've been doing most of that all in-house so far. We're probably just going to act as general contractors, so we should see a huge savings on that. But that's moving along nicely. We've been doing multiple tree takedowns as we've been flexing our tree and arborist muscles in the department, a new capability that we've we've tooled up in the last couple years, working on various water jobs and curb box repairs in our normal staffing and support of the Water Department and distribution system, normal sign maintenance this time of year, doing some historic streetlight repairs. We've had, they've gotten to the age where the underground feeds are now going bad because there's some lights in town that were built upon the original Philadelphia Electric light posts, and those foundations are still there. So we have clerical conductors that are like 80 years old under the streets, and it's copper, and it doesn't age gracefully. We've installed two new EV, public EV chargers in the parking lot back here at Borough Hall. That'll be available to both visitors to this building as well as the park in Broad Commons. And we just completed some roof repairs over at Public Works. So it's been a busy season in the spring, taking advantage of this warm weather and getting ready for mowing season and paving season. So that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ellinger. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mr. Bell, what do you have for us tonight?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one announcement and one item for council. The announcement is that the submission window for the Youth Leadership Recognition Award Program has been extended to May 3rd, and we look forward to getting a lot of quality applicants. So if you know of anyone who will be 18 or younger as of May 1st, please nominate them or encourage them to nominate. The item for council is consideration of the 2022-2024 Farmers Market Licensing Agreement that the mayor presaged in her remarks. So hopefully this passes. So attached, please find the above-referenced agreement, this is in the packets, by the way, which provides for the Saturday morning farmers market on Hamilton Street by the Bucks County Food Shed Alliance. All provisions of the agreement are unchanged from previous years. The Community and Government Affairs Committee has reviewed the agreement and is recommending its approval. If council wishes to follow the recommendation, it can do so by motion, and I so move.
Second.
We had a second by Mr. Frederick, I think. Any questions or comments from any members of council? I have one. What is the opening date for the farmers market this year? Do we know that yet?
April 13th.
It is actually April 20th.
Oh, 20th?
Mm-hmm.
It was 13th.
That's the only question I had. Anybody else? Any questions or comments from any members of the public? Hearing none, like to call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Zoning and Planning, Ms. Jarrett.
We did meet this week, and it was actually a pretty light agenda for a change. We have just the Certificate of Appropriateness for HARB, the Historic Architectural Review Board of Doylestown Borough. At its regular monthly meeting, the Borough of Doylestown Historic and Architectural Review Board recommended the following building applications. One for 10 North Main Street, which is also known as the Fountain House, for an elevator, whom we love accessibility. The HARB recommended that the application be approved for a certificate of appropriateness as submitted and presented, with the condition that the gutters and downs pounce will match the existing ones. And next was 347 Maple Avenue for windows, and the HARB recommended that the application be approved for the certificate of appropriateness as submitted and presented. The Zoning and Planning Committee recommends that council approve the applications in accordance with the HARB's recommendation. If council wishes to follow the committee's recommendation, it can do so by motion, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Ms. Popkin. Thank you. Any questions or comments from any members of council? Hearing none, any questions or comments from anybody in the audience? Hearing none, I'd like to call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Additionally, we have the code enforcement report and the building inspection report, which are in the packet. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Ms. Jarrett. Environment and Rec, Ms. Wykoff, do you have anything for us tonight?
I don't have anything to report. We didn't meet this month, but just a mention of a new recreation program, yoga in the park, which will be held at Broad Commons early in the morning for early risers. Sun Dog Yoga will be providing instructors, and everyone will bring their own mat and supplies, and I'm sure it will be well received.
We need a motion.
Yes, we need a motion to approve the agreement that...
Okay. Can someone, can I do the motion? Okay. I would like to... Oh, that I can read. Thank you. Attached, please find an outline and flyer for proposed yoga program at Broad Commons Park. The Park and Recreation Board and Environment and Recreation Committee have reviewed the plan on our recommending approval. If council wishes to follow the recommendation, it can do so by motion, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Mr. Kinney. Any questions or comments from any members of council? Hearing none, any questions or comments from any members of the public? Hearing none, like to call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wykoff. Mr. LeBrone, Water Utility, you have anything for us tonight?
Thank you, Mr. President. We did meet this month, and our chief water operator, Jerry Matozo, gave us a stellar report, as usual, and things are moving along with many things. Backflow program update, PFAS testing, mandatory testing is now in place. And our water engineer, CKS, is working on the water system plan for handling the PFAS situation. But we do have one actionable item, and that is regarding the maple wood tank maintenance project. And we're looking for authorization to advertise bids on the maple wood stand pipe. So attached, please find the above-referenced bid package and draft advertisement. The maple wood stand pipe project was originally conceived as a Co-Stars bid. That's Co-Stars all in caps there. But we have been informed that the standard Co-Stars bid does not comply with the procurement requirements of the ARPA program, which is our predominant funding source for the project. This new bid process will comply with ARPA procurement requirements and assure our ability to utilize our H2O and PA Small Water and Sewer Grants funds. The Water Utility Committee has reviewed the documents and is recommending advertisement of the bid. If council wishes to follow the recommendation, it can do so by motion, and I do so move.
Second.
Yes, a motion and a second by Ms. Jarrett, I think. Any questions or comments from any members of council? Hearing none, any questions or comments from any members of the public? Hearing none, like to call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And that's the end of my report. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. LeBrone. Ms. Popkin, Finance and Pension.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. We have two items. The first item is the consideration of Resolution Number 2024-4. This is to approve a Doylestown Hospital Authority bond issue. And in the packet, you will find the attached reference resolution as requested by the Doylestown Hospital Authority. The resolution calls for the approval by the borough for financing from the proceeds of the 2024 bonds for the following. One is a capital program not to exceed 10 million. The second is the funding of a debt service reserve fund, if that's necessary. Number three would be the refunding of outstanding revenue bonds, Series B, from 2013. Number four is the payment of the termination fees for interest rate swaps. That would be associated with 2013 B bonds. And then number five is the payment of certain costs and expenses that are related to the issuance of the 2024 bonds. As the hospital authority was created in 1979 pursuant to the ordinance of Doylestown Borough, Borough Council is required to approve such a resolution by the Municipal Authorities Act to permit the hospital authority to proceed. The resolution creates no liability or obligation to us at the borough. A representative from the Doylestown Hospital Authority will be present to answer any questions that council might have. Is that person present? Thank you. And the Finance and Pension Committee has reviewed this information and the resolution and is recommending that council adopt the Resolution 2024-4. If council agrees with the recommendation, it may do so by motion, and I so move.
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Jarrett, I believe. Any questions or comments from any members of council?
Mr. President, we did have a few questions during our finance meeting regarding this, and maybe we could get a few answers. The questions were, one was, with the capital program not to exceed 10 million, what would that be spent on?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. My name is Betsy Seber. I'm the Chief Financial Officer for Doylestown Health. And the potential $10 million is for what I call the invisible projects, infrastructure within the hospital facility, things like HVAC, replacement of elevators, really deferred maintenance for things that need to be updated, unless anybody wants to make a donation and have the HVAC named.
Thank you. And then our other question during our meeting was, with the merger with U Penn, does this affect this resolution at all?
It does not. The due diligence process is continuing with Penn Medicine, and we do anticipate that that's going to take a number of months as well. Once we do reach definitive agreement, there will be a number of months following that for regulatory approval. In the meantime, our focus is really to do what's in the best interest for Doylestown Health.
Thank you. Those were our questions, Mr. President.
Actually, I have a question, if you don't mind.
Sure.
In regard to the merger with Penn, my assumption is that the hospital authority is going to continue to operate as an independent body, or how is that going to work after the merger?
The Doylestown Hospital Authority would not be affected by this transaction.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from anybody up here? Hearing none, thank you very much. Appreciate your indulgence meeting with us. Any questions from the public? Hearing none, I'd like to call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. And then the second item is the finance report that's attached in your packet, and I'll turn that over to Ms. Brinker to report on it.
Thank you, Ms. Popkin. Everybody has been provided a copy of the finance report, including all prepaid bills, accounts payable, and payroll for February. The total is $841,826.99.
Thank you, and I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We had a second by Mr. Kinney, I believe it was. Any questions, comments from any members of the council? Hearing none, any questions or comments from any members of the public? Hearing none, like to call a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. That's the end of my report.
Thank you, Ms. Popkin. I do not have any personnel items to report on. We did not meet this month. Professionals report, Mr. Doherty, from the engineer's standpoint.
Thank you. I have nothing to report tonight.
Okay. Bucky, anything from...
Thank you. No report.
Chief, anything from Central Bucks Regional?
Thank you. Nothing to report.
Thank you. I do not have a president's report tonight, any items of old business. Hearing none, any items of new business?
One thing, Mr. President. I just wanted to announce, we've been advertising that on this Wednesday night at 6:30 and Saturday at noon, we'll be having our first preparedness seminar, putting together a ready kit for, in the event of an emergency.
And that's at the fire hole?
That's here.
Oh, it's right here? Okay. Thank you. Any other items of new business? Hearing none. Open public comment. We didn't have anybody signed up, so I guess we won't have any of that.
Mr. President.
Oh.
If you like, I think you can allow her to sign up.
Yeah.
Let me ask her to sign up.
Yeah. If you could sign this, please. If you could sign this, please.
Hello. Good evening. I want to thank you so much for your time. Again, apologize for my tardiness. I was stuck in traffic on the way here. But I want to thank the President O'Brien, as well as the members of the council. My name is Ariel Lefkovitz, and I am a puppy mills policy specialist with the Humane Society of the United States. And I was hoping to speak earlier when you were voting on that agenda item, but I was glad to hear that it was approved and moved forward. And I just want to thank the Borough Council officially for your consideration and advancement of this humane pet store ordinance and voice my strong support for it. This adds Doylestown to the ranks of a growing number of communities taking a stand against puppy mill cruelty and protecting consumers from unknowingly supporting an inhumane industry. As you all know, this humane ordinance does two things. It drives the pet market towards more humane sources, like shelters, rescues, and responsible breeders who sell directly to the public and not through third parties like pet stores. We believe in responsible breeders who want to show where their animals were raised and to evaluate the potential families who are coming in and making sure that those puppies are going to the home that's the right fit for their family and for those puppies' needs. So this ordinance also protects consumers from predatory lending practices, as most cannot afford the thousands of dollars that pet store puppies cost out of pocket. Pet stores often push financing through third-party lenders, and this leads to financial hardship for those customers who unknowingly end up with extremely high interest rates and fees. A humane pet store ordinance is truly the best way to protect consumers and animals. To be clear, this would not prevent responsible breeders from selling directly to the public. Supporting this ordinance will still allow consumers to obtain a puppy or kitten from the breeder, shelter, rescue of their choice. The Borough of Doylestown is now joining nine municipalities in Pennsylvania who have addressed this issue, as well as nearly 500 localities nationwide, as well as seven states that have passed similar policies. And this is such a great time to be passing this ordinance because there aren't any puppy stores in your community. And so you'll be preventing puppy retailers from coming into town, harming pets and families, and showing support for the effort to enact this policy statewide. Once again, we appreciate the council for your consideration, and thank you so much for your time tonight.
Thank you as well.
Thank you.
We... James, you have anything?
I'm not.
Okay.
He's not signed up.
He's not signed up.
He is a stickler.
I want to praise his too. You can sign up.
We do not have an executive session. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
It was a motion and a second by Mr... I heard three of them in there, so I don't know. Take your pick.
Take your pick.
Okay. Senator Frederick. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Your turn. Thank you, all.